Good evening, everybody. Due to illness, Mayor Adams is out. I'm Mayor Pro Tim, Ted Kenny, and I'll be running the meeting tonight. So I'll call the meeting to order, and first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Niaf, you'd be kind enough to...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. The next item on our agenda is to... is something that's always fun, I think, for our chief, especially to do but fun for the city, is to swear in a new police officer. So Chief Johnson.
Counsel, thanks so much for giving us a couple of minutes for this. I'd like to introduce you to Jacob Smith. Jacob is joining us as our 17th full-time police officer. His position is backfilling for the new SRO position that's going to be starting here in a few weeks. Jake has seven years of experience in law enforcement. I'm from Goshen County, and he also serves our country and our state honorably in the National Guard.
Thank you.
We're incredibly excited to have him on our team. And tonight, he's going to make some pretty important promises, so we wanted to take a moment and celebrate that. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Use your right hand. Put it after me. I, Jacob Smith, do solemnly swear...
Aye, Jacob Smith, do solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America...
(laughter)
...that I will... I told you, you should read this.
I know.
That I will faithfully support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will faithfully support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Wyoming.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Wyoming.
And the city of Torrington.
And the city of Torrington.
On my honor...
On my honor.
I will never betray my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will never betray my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always find the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always find the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will maintain the highest ethical standards in my personal and professional life.
I will maintain the highest ethical standards in my professional and personal life.
I will uphold the values of the community of Torrington and those of the Torrington Police Department.
I will uphold the values of the community of Torrington and those of the Torrington Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.[421.56][421.56](applause)
So what is his badge number?
Number 115.
115. That's awesome. Very good. Thank you, Chief, and welcome aboard, Officer Smith. I would like to also, before we continue on, is to thank K-G-O-S, K-E-R-M, Ryan, and Grant Kate for broadcasting this tonight and for putting us up on their YouTube channel. I didn't get to that right at the beginning, but it's what happens when you have new people running the show. Okay. We also have another fun activity for you, employee recognition. And I believe Chief Johnson, if you're going to be doing that, is that correct?
Counsel, thanks again for giving us a couple of minutes at the beginning. We just wanted to take a few minutes to celebrate and appreciate Tammy for 20 years of service to Torrington Police Department. Tammy's roots run very, very deep in our agency and in our community. She is the proud daughter of our only fallen officer, Lieutenant Harley Mark, who's lost... who lost his life while protecting our community in 1993. Tammy proudly carries on his tradition of caring about our community and investing in her family. Tammy joined our agency on August 12, 2002, and served as a communications officer for 12 years. In 2014, she took on a new role as our code enforcement officer for our community. This is a very challenging position with lots of difficulties and trials, and she does a tremendous job and makes a big impact in what she does. Tammy's work helps to keep all of us safe and maintain the quality of life in our community. She does her job well. She's a hard and willing worker, and she genuinely cares about our agency and our community. We're grateful for Tammy's service, and we will look forward to working with her, hopefully, for many more years to come. So, thank you, Tammy.[552.16][552.16](applause)
We didn't ask either one of them if they wanted to give a speech or anything or wanted to tell us anything, but...
I'm sure they both want to come and get...
(laughter) Oh, yeah. Thank you again, Chief, and congratulations, Tammy. Okay, mayor informational items. We have a few. We'll go through quickly. Like I said, Mayor Adams is out due to illness. Will return to duty next week. He's being... has COVID and will be out for at least five days. So far this summer, we've dealt with some very high temperatures, but with some exceptions, the city of Torrington and the community have survived pretty well. Please continue to take care of yourself, your family, and your fellow workers as we look forward to cooler September and fall temperatures. Remember that Goshen County Fire Ban is in place and will likely remain through most of the fall. The potential for grass fires is high and will stay that way until cooler temperatures and moisture comes later in the year. The COVID report continues to be positive. As of August 9, the number of positive tests has dropped into the low 30s. There have been no COVID-related deaths in the county since last February. No one is currently being treated at community hospital for COVID-related illnesses. Goshen County continues to have a high-risk rating for the likelihood of contacting the illness. Please be mindful of that, and COVID is still out there, and people are continuing to coming... come down with the disease, obviously, as Mayor Adams has succumbed. There is going to be a vaccination clinic, the 23rd, from 12 to 5, and I'm assuming that it's here at the Pony Express Room? Anybody know? That's where it's at? Okay, thank you. Torrington Swimming Pool has closed for the summer. Sunday, August 14 was the last open day. Despite the difficulties with repairs necessary to get it open and running, the season was very successful, and the pool staff is looking forward to next summer season at the pool. We want to thank all of the city of Torrington staff who put in hours and hours to keep it operational, and, believe me, it was appreciated by everybody. Everyone should be aware that school is starting next week. I believe the 23rd is the first day of school. Fall sports practices have begun at the area schools and at EWC. Please be aware of our children, parents, buses, and the activity that will be taking place in and around our schools beginning this week. Slow down in those areas. The speed limit in school zones is 20 miles an hour. Lights, signs, and crosswalks are visible in all of those areas, and the police will be increasing their patrols in all areas where children are present. Remind everyone to put your phone down and refrain from talking and texting while driving through our community. The Baylor site remains open on Saturdays throughout the fall to receive your yard waste from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Grass bins are located throughout the city for your use. Please refrain from placing anything other than grass in those bins. Elk Eco Cycle is open Monday through Wednesday to receive your separated paper, aluminum cans, and cardboard. Please help the recycling effort in our community by taking your recyclables to the Curtis Avenue site. I also noticed that they had a place for steel cans. I believe they have a dumpster for that or something. So you might check before you take them, but I believe that's what was also there. The city of Torrington currently has four large projects awaiting ARPA funding, a $7 million wastewater treatment facility, an East D Street water line improvement project at $6 million, Albany Street improvements, including waterline curb and gutter at $900,000, and well 16 connections, including a reverse osmosis treatment for $1.8 million. These projects total nearly $16 million in funding requests. The city will move forward with these projects if and when money becomes available. The city of Torrington budget, as presented, includes all of these projects, and we know full well that it is very unlikely that we'll receive funding in the coming budget year. By now, the primary election is complete, and we will find out later this evening how things turned out. Many contests will be decided with today's vote. However, the mayoral and the city council races will move forward to the general election on Tuesday, November 8, 2022. We wish them all well as their campaigns continue. And that's all the items that we have tonight and the informational part of it. Next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the 8:22 meeting. Council meeting is published.
Move to approve the agenda is published? Consent adjust...
Okay.
Agenda.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. Thank you, Councilman Patterson. Any further comments? Those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. We have approved the consent agenda. Okay, the next item is to the approval of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I'd move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Councilwoman Steinbach. Thank you. Councilman Patterson? Further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So the agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is the public forum, and I have a couple of people that would like to speak, and I would like to remind you that it... to take two or three minutes, please, and share the information that you have. Mr. Kronk, I believe you picked yours up first.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. I don't need an introduction to you folks. I was here two weeks ago at the park. For the rest of the audience, I'm Dave Kronk, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Can you hear me? And I got my appointment from Mayor Jolovich approximately 32 years ago. My reason for being here tonight is to try to keep this city of Torrington from being involved in a very expensive and possibly a very embarrassing lawsuit. I have left each of the council members and some of the city staff a packet that packet as relates to the responsibilities and authority of the Planning Commission. It was really cool tonight that we listened to a young man being sworn in as a police officer. I believe every elected official in front of me swore that same oath when they took this office. So as you go through that packet, I left it behind. I highlighted the important items, and I think you'll see that it was... that was the Torrington Municipal Code that was adopted in 1984, and there was a bit of ambiguity there. I found another... I found another item that I didn't bring tonight that said 1976. But either way, it doesn't matter. That is the city code... that is the Torrington Municipal Code that you people all swore to uphold. It makes it very plain that annexations and subdivisions come through the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission for two purposes. That is the public hearing process. Every planning commission meeting is advertised in the paper so the public knows, and then we come together and meet, and we're an advisory committee to the city, but it does have to come through the Planning Commission by statute that you swore to uphold. So concerning this second reading of the RUT subdivision that is very adversarial, I don't want this to go to a lawsuit. I want it to be revisited the proper way. And every... every annexation, if... I don't know if there's been any subdivisions. I made my point two weeks ago. Under this administration, no annexations or subdivisions have been brought through the Planning Commission. They're all... they're going to have to be revisited because they're illegal. So what I would suggest would be, as I did two weeks ago, that this be tabled tonight. It would seem to me that any vote in favor of it on this second reading would be indirect violation and arrogance of the oath of office that you people took. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kronk. Appreciate that. The second speaker I have is from the Wyoming House of Representatives, Mr. J.D. Williams, Representative J.D. Williams. And just a reminder, two to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative J.D. Williams, House District 2, just from here north to Newcastle. And recently, I've been fielding questions and concerns regarding the city of Torrington's annexation process, specifically the RUT annexation that we were just hearing about. And so accordingly, I'm here tonight to get more familiar with this process. I just thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Torrington. Okay, moving on to action items. First thing we have on the agenda is a proclamation. And I believe, Mr. Eddington, if you would please read that?
Honoring Hunger Action Month. Whereas addressing the food insecurity needs of children, youth, men, women, seniors, active military, and veterans today is fundamental for the future of Torrington. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Goshen County, where 12.3% of people struggle with hunger, and one in every six children do not know where their next meal will come from. Whereas the need for comprehensive, coordinated emergency food programs place upon our community a critical responsibility. Whereas the city of Torrington is committed to combating hunger in every part of our community and providing additional resources that those in Goshen County need. Whereas it is our responsibility, citizens of Torrington, to learn about hunger and to do our part in reducing that hunger. Whereas Torrington partners with Food Bank of Wyoming, a member of the Feeding the American Nationwide Network of Food Banks and their local partners, WILH Help, USDA, and Land of Goshen Ministries, to educate people about the important role of hunger relief organizations, raising awareness for the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger and food insecurity issues. Whereas more than 1,640 residents of Goshen County rely annually on food provided by Food Bank of Wyoming and their local partners. Whereas Food Bank of Wyoming, its generous funders, volunteers, and local partner agencies committed to educating citizens on the role of food banks and hunger relief efforts in solving hunger. Whereas Food Bank of Wyoming provides over 9 million meals across Wyoming annually, and to engage each of us to help end hunger, one meal at a time, either through donations, social media shares, or volunteer shifts. Whereas the month of September is designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities. Now, therefore, I, Randy L. Adams, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Hunger Action Month and encourage all citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of food insecurity, how it impacts our nation, state, county, and communities.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington. I believe, Mr. Borger, if you'd like to come up and speak to this.
We thank you for your awareness of the hunger issues that the people in our community and our county face. I wanted to introduce you to our current food pantry director, Brenda Hoffman. She's been doing a wonderful job with her volunteers, and we also wanted to give you a very, very brief overview of some of the things that we do. Could you hand just a few of those out to the council members, please? WILH Help, of course, does the food pantry, and we do much more because we are a community action agency, and your packet will expand upon that.
Thank you.
But I wanted to highlight that with our food program, that so far from January of 2022 until August of 2022, we have served 1,934 individuals, and that is not a full 12-month time period. Whereas in the past, we had seen a slight drop in food insecurity, now we see an increase in food insecurity primarily because of food costs. We especially see it in our seniors, and on the reports that you have, you can see that our greatest use comes from our seniors who are 60-plus. And we wanted to highlight that to you because those is a vulnerable age group. If I can also slide in a few of the other programs that we do, just to give you a brief highlight. Our Youth Alternatives Program was started this year. So far, 26 youths have been served from March through July. Nine were female, 17 were male. Ages were 9 to 17. 24 completed our program, which is a very good success rate. We have a federal grant called the CSBG Grant. $70,000 of services were provided in Goshen County out of that grant this year. That ended up being, well, let me read it to you, seven home repairs, 31 rent payments, 73 utility payments, 46 hotel stays, 26 transportation assistance, and 27 medical payment assistance. When you include all six counties that we serve, that's 341 services at about $150,000. We also have partnered with the Wyoming Department of Family Services to support their emergency rental assistance program. In Goshen County alone, 222 applications were paid for a total of $450,000. All six counties together totals 1,272 applications for a total of $3.2 million. Those are federal funds that were spent into our local communities to assist people to maintain their housing, safe and affordable housing, plus food, utilities, and any number of other things. We just wanted to let you know that it's your help and your contribution and your partnership that allows us to do that. We thank you for that.
Thank you, Kyle. I would entertain a motion if...
I'll move to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Councilman Patterson. Move to accept the proclamation?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Steinbach. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the proclamation as read. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number two, second item, is a special event permit, and Doug Mercer with the Scotts Valley Street Rods is requesting a special event permit for classic cars on Main Street to be held on September 24 from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The applicant is requesting approval to close the public street on Main Street between 19th and 21st Avenue to have a special event permit fee waived. Mr. Mercer, if you'd be so kind.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim...
Thank you.
...and counsel. I have a handout for everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Mercer.
You've covered it pretty well so far. Scotts Valley Street Rods have had a September show since 1999 was the first one I was aware of. This year, we're asking for a little bit more room, and that has, to my knowledge, that has been approved, and we're... we're going to be using that additional room for additional kids activities. We're attempting to make the... the car show more inclusive of the citizenry and especially children. You may recall, last year, our first year, we had a kids' coloring contest, and 40 kids came out of the woodwork and had a great time. We had terrific prizes for them. We're going to do the same thing this year. The plan is to have a couple bounce houses this year, plus additional vendors that will support the citizenry that walk through the show. And we'd like to thank the city of Torrington for being a sponsor, and also we request that the special events fee be waived, because that's just more money that will throw up the show.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions to Mr. Mercer before he steps away? I believe we did this last year.
You express our appreciation for you doing this. It's good for the community. It's a good event, so...
It's...
It's fun.
It's a bittersweet activity because it's a lot of work, but it's fun when it's successful.
Thank you.
You bet.
Counsel, what's your pleasure here?
I would move to approve the special event permit.
I would move to approve the special event permit and waive the fee.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Steinbach.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. That's been moved and seconded that we approve the event and waive the special event fee. Further comments or questions? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Good luck. Number three on our agenda is ordinance, second reading, annexing the RUTs, second edition.
Mayor Pro Tim, if I could make some comments if I could to do that. I don't have a speech prepared, so it's always a little dangerous, I guess, just to stand up and speak. But I don't know of another event in recent times that's caused as much stress and strain and loss of sleep for me personally, and I assume from my discussions with my colleagues, with them also. There's a reason that we annex and that we zone. And when we have people packed in close proximity like we do in a community, in a town, it has to do with safety, it has to do with health. You put that many people together, there has to be rules, there has to be standards that everyone has to follow. Heard the arguments back and forth both ways. In my mind, it would be perfectly legal for us to proceed with this. But on the other hand, there are some questions that have come up, and I think some legitimate ones about procedure. I think we can do it, but the question for me is, should we do it? It's what it comes down to, I guess. It's a decision we have to make for ourselves. Lots and lots of work, lots of time has gone into this. I don't know how far back it goes. Actually, this meeting marks the end of my second year on the council, so I'm still fairly new at this. We have some areas in Torrington or surrounding Torrington that need some attention. I think in some ways, it's unfortunate that this particular portion of land is not really one of the big problems. I'm not sure how this all came about, and we started doing it procedurally. But I think, as far as I'm concerned, what I would like to do is hit the pause button. I don't want to vote for it, and I don't want to vote against it. So the position I'm going to take tonight is I will neither make a motion or second a motion to advance it. My colleagues then can do as they will. I'll vote if it gets a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patterson. Mr. Eddington, if you would be willing to read that ordinance, please.
It's an ordinance annexing within the corporate limits of the city of Torrington, Wyoming, real property to be known as the RUTs, second edition.
Thank you. This passed on the first reading on August 2nd, and we're ready to move to the second reading of this. And so, counsel, what's your pleasure? Okay, Mr. Eddington, we have no one making a motion, so I need a little assistance here.
It would die for lack of a motion.
So this ordinance then would, then what?
It'll have to come up at the next meeting.
Okay. So because of a lack of a motion, it will move this to the next council meeting. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is a request for $1,200,000 increase in agreement with MSC number Mr. Harkins, our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, mayor and council. I spoke with Larry Malo from the Wyoming Water Development Office. He's the project manager on our Well 16 connection project. He was concerned that we may not have enough funding in the existing agreement that we have with them, which is a 67% funded project through Wyoming Water Development Commission and 33% participation from the city of Torrington. I tend to agree with that. So under his recommendation, I'm prepared this letter for the mayor to sign that will increase that agreement by about $1.2 million. Basically, it's a construction cost increase of about $300,000, which is 51.6% over the original cost. We would fund the proposed RO unit at $785,000 and a backup generator at $115,000. As Mayor Pro Tim Kenny spoke earlier, we did apply for this project in the ARPA funding. And if we are selected and get that funding, we would forego this request in favor of that grant funding.
So we need a motion to approve the request for increase. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to that effect.
You know, this almost feels like the legislature when we're talking about an increase of $1.2 million. It's all moved.
Thank you, Councilman Patterson.
It seemed to me like way back when we started this project, there was a test well that said that we didn't need to put an RO unit on this well, didn't it?
The test results of the Well 16 are borderline high in nitrates. They are right at the EPA standard of 10 milligrams per liter. So technically, for us to be able to put it directly into the Torrington distribution system, we would have to treat the water. If we don't get any additional funding, we will probably just go with the original transmission of that Well 16 to the city's water treatment plant and treat it there. But we wouldn't have the backup capacity to go directly into our distribution system.
What did this project rank on our ARPA when we applied for those ARPA funds?
This one is our number two ranked project. The first one is the wastewater treatment plant. Obviously, this would be our second ranked project.
Okay. It's been moved that we approve this request.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Steinbach. Does council have any other questions or comments before we proceed? Hearing none. Those in favor of the request for the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harkins. Okay. Number five on our agenda is solar energy generation project proposal. Mrs. Stricker, Treasure Stricker, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you, mayor and council. We just had a work session discussing some options. I don't believe we're at a point to make any decisions, but I'd be glad to take any suggestions from the council at this time.
Counsel?
I think this looks like it could have some potential, and I would like to investigate it further. So what I would do is move to ask the city staff to research and provide some more information, some of those questions that we brought up in the work session.
Okay.
And could that include getting more information from Sand Hill Energy?
Yes.
Okay. So I would need a second for that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Steinbach. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we ask the staff and Sand Hill Energy to review this and bring forward some further information for us so that we can make a good decision. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion's approved. Thank you, Treasure Stricker. Okay. Number six on our agenda is approval of the bills. Mrs. Stricker, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and council. I handed out a list of bills for your consideration tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Page four of the first set, Evergreen Tennis. Two complete first team blue basketball system.
This is at Jordan Park. We improved the basketball area there, and we did get funding through the rec board to fund this project.
So the 4665 is all rec board?
Say that again.
The 4665 is all rec board?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. Now we have to do a... Chief Johnson to protect us. No one to...
I do have a question. National Fire Protection Association, it's 5683, it's on page five.
Mayor Pro Tim, that is for a code book for hangars. We've subdivided our airport, and there's a lot of interest in building hangars, a lot of codes with hangars. So I had to get a code book for that.
You have a code, you are getting a code book for that?
I have one. I ordered a code book for it.
Okay.
There's a special code book just for hangars.
Really?
We have an individual who wants to build a hangar right now, and there's some issues with it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Estes.
So on the second set of bills, on page one, I just want to make sure that that tree removal, that's for a second tree? Because we just, we approved a tree removal in the last, or during the last meeting.
I believe it is. And I believe it is charged to the electric, so it must have been causing problems with the line at 374 East C.
I thought the other one was on C, too. Maybe there was two. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions of Treasure Stricker? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I'd move to approve the bills as presented.
Thank you, Councilwoman Steinbach. Thank you, Councilman Patterson, seconded it. Further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Those in favor of approving the bills as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number seven on our agenda is public comment. And anyone that wishes to come up and speak, I'd ask you to take two to three minutes, please, and share your information with us.
I'm Shelley Rutt. You know, I've been here before.
Yeah.
So taking this down here. I just basically had some clarifying items and just some clear facts I just wanted to bring up. Back, and I'm referring to the RUT subdivision issue, and I know you've tabled it, so this may give you guys some food for thought for the next couple weeks. I just wanted to clarify, Jim Eddington has admitted, when we first were delivered certified papers, it was on June 15th, he also said that he sent two uniformed Torrington police officers to my door to deliver the same set of papers that he certified mailed, just to make sure we got them. So I just want to say that if there's a question about jurisdiction and police officers not knowing where we live, that's erroneous. They all know where we live. Okay? So he did have two uniformed police officers serve papers that day. And an MOU, the MOU that has, I believe it was prior to April 27th, because April 27th is when the Torrington Telegram put an article in the paper that both county and police, or sheriff's, county attorney, police, all agreed on an MOU. Okay? I cannot find a document or a date that it became into effect. All I know is the Telegram reported it on August 27th. I'd like to know when the MOU was signed officially. It's not a recorded document at the courthouse, because I've looked. But according to the Telegram, Police Chief Johnson was quoted, that they collaborated with Goshen County Sheriff Cory Fleener and County Attorney Eric Boyer to draft the MOU. And he said, "There wasn't a single incident which initiated the need for it, but instead mounting concerns over time." Jim Eddington refers to a big drug bust. Now, if that's not a big issue, I don't know what is. Okay? They keep referring to safety issues of our property. Okay? We're at risk. That was the other thing. Somebody said, listening back through the audio of that meeting, that we're at risk, that there's only a few deputies, that our property, and I really wish that you guys could come and view the 3.61 acres, because it's rather large, you know? And I know you referred to it as being tiny. You know, we're so close knit, we're so close to each other. Not close to our well, not close to our septic, we're not dumping our poop pond, excuse my language, right next to the water line to our neighboring properties. Okay? Our well and electric, or our well and septic are only five, maybe six years old. And they're not icky. We had a water test. You guys, I don't know, you must have seen the results. My attorney, or our attorney, sent them to Jim. So the water results are very favorable, okay? I just don't know if you guys actually saw the results, or if you're privy to that information, and I can email those to you. Okay? We compared them to a city water, or city property that had city water to it, and both Coller's Well and our well. I'd much rather drink my well water, just saying. The other question I need clarifying is, back when RUT subdivision, okay, was made in 2012, the plat was, the ordinance that supposedly refers to that RUT subdivision is not called the ordinance for the RUT subdivision. It is called the RUT First Edition. This is the plat map. Says final plat, RUT subdivision. I just want you to know, this is the only plat that exists for the RUT properties up there, that's on file for the courthouse. On file. Okay? And according to state statutes, I don't know offhand, my husband has that statute, that you have to file, with an ordinance, you have to file a map. Okay? That ordinance that was filed originally on Lot 1 and 2, this property here, this is the property you're trying to annex. This property here has the wrong legal description on your ordinance. I know you've been told this before. I just want to say, this legal's wrong. Okay? If that ordinance had a wrong legal, and it's referring to this map that's not even saying RUT First Edition, who come up with RUT First Edition in the city? Because that's a city drum... First Edition in the city? Because that's a city drawn document. Now, here we sit, 2022, just over 10 years. It's quite a funny, because the first day you read this, on July 19th, was two days after the 10-year mark when this was filed. I find that very ironic. Two days. I don't know what statuteal limitations are. I don't, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just saying it's kind of fishy. It is absolutely atrocious. The document wrongness of everything. I know you've been shown this. I am going to spit every time I see this, going, "How can they let this pass?" How can you call it now, this area you're referring to, with a legal description? Okay? You have it in your packet. Our 3.61 acres does not have a name. It is not RUTT Second Edition. We don't have a survey. That's what I'm getting at. Check your statutes before you vote on something, right or wrong. And then one more thing, Jim Eddington referred to on the July 19th meeting. Dennis Kelly, you mentioned about a statute 151421 about de-annexation. You asked, "Has there been a de-annexation?" Jim Eddington unequivocally said, "No." I have it right here. There was a city municipal de-annexation for the Arrowhead subdivision up by the airport. That was done in August 9th, 2011. Right in the time this was all going down. So there has been a de-annexation. I think, oh, and the other, I want to remind you, I'm still on the city's website as part of the Planning Commission. So I know Mayor Adams isn't here, but according to the city code, the city code says the mayor, along with the approval of the council, has to remove a member of a committee, being that Planning Commission. I never once saw, I still haven't seen, a letter. But I'm still listed on your website as part of the Planning Commission. Not right. That's all.
Further comments from the public? Mr. Kronk?
Yeah, I will come forward. Regarding what Shelley just said, she did sit with us on the Planning Commission, and I think that there really needs to be an explanation of why she was removed without her knowledge. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Not seeing anyone stepping up. Item number eight would be to adjourn. Okay, if you have more information or something that's new, because I know you spoke at the last meeting.
Oh, I don't know. It was brought up, thank you, Mr. Patterson, for tabling this. I do have a couple questions. You had said, and I know that you were not prepared, so it was kind of off the cuff, but that there are areas that need attention. I guess my question would be, what does need attention mean? And maybe you guys need to think about that, to let us, you know, to explain that. The safety and health issues, I understand, and you said that there are rules that need to be implemented. I completely agree that there are rules. I'm not going to dispute that one bit. I kind of wish that there were more rules in the county. If there were, Torrington wouldn't look like a junkyard, no matter which direction you drove into it. So I am all for rules. This property being an acreage, though it's not a 7,000 square foot, you know, lot with a house on it, so it is a little bit different. And so that would be my main question, is what does that mean when you said that they need attention? I don't, I think if you look at the RUTT property, it's not one of them that needs attention. I found out this evening, this really wasn't a personal situation with me. I believed that they should not be annexed in, but then I was told when I sat down in here, "Oh, guess what? Your property's going to be next, because the property right next to you is 75 percent. So then when they take the property next to you, you're surrounded by, me, surrounded by 75 percent." So it's just this puzzle that just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And again, I don't see any point in annexing in an acreage that's got a well. And you talk about the islands, you know, if it's an island with a simple house, 7,000 square foot, that makes sense. RUTT's does not make any sense. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else like to speak?
I just have one question for the chief, or Dennis, or Jim. Keno is supposed to be coming, starting the September 18th. Is there anybody that's expressed any interest in making a Keno parlor in town or anything like that? Or is that just the state taking care of all that?
Councilman Kelly, thank you for the question. Is your question, is somebody looking to put Keno in?
Yeah, is there?
I believe so, yes.
Because it's supposed to start the 18th, it's supposed to be legal.
Yes, sir. I believe, I've had contact by one individual that's going to put Keno in.
Is that all controlled by the state, or do the municipalities have any say in it?
We have a few rules and regulations. One of them, it's an old regulation in our ordinance that says you can't have gambling on Main Street, because it's a historic district. You've allowed it with, I think the American Legion had something in 1940 Maine at one time with the machines years ago. Those gaming machines are in every, almost every bar, I believe, now. So it's just something that's never-
The games of skill?
I'm sorry?
The games of skill.
Yeah.
Unless you're dead within the slot machines.
So, yeah, so we have been contacted.
So we don't need to upgrade ordinances or anything?
We could probably look at it. But with the parking regulations we are downtown, there's no regulation to have off-street parking, so it's all public parking. That's usually the big issue. Somebody has something like that, and they have to have a lot of parking. But where ours is all open to the public.
And has anybody heard, you heard anything about the revenue from it? Is the city going to get revenue from that stream?
I haven't heard.
Okay, thanks.
Anything further? I guess I saw Chief Patch sneak in the back door. Do you have anything you want to add tonight?
Okay.
Okay. All right. So it doesn't seem like anyone's going to speak again, so we need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Steinbach. Thank you, Councilman Patterson seconded that. Those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming. We appreciate it.